...this month, which is way down. We were way up at probably ten or more some months with some of the abandoned houses, which is good. We were getting hit with some larcenies from vehicles too. That seems to be way down also. One thing I have, we, I know it had came up at the precinct meeting too. Neighborhood Road in Whittier, there was a couple of complaints about people hanging out there drinking. It actually came in on the third. I sent somebody right out there and we arrested the gentleman that was out there. He actually had an active warrant and the warrant was for the tickets he got the last time at that location for open alcohol, which he never answered. So, he went to the precinct.
He did a third.
He was in his cell and he went for it the next day. So, hopefully that's one safety car. And also the patrol officers are gonna make checks there to make sure they don't come back. Like I said, if anybody sees him come out there, you know, give a call and we'll head out and be the same result until they learn. Couple of issues. Last month we had, I think you talked about getting the bike patrol out. I'm working on, I will be out there on bikes on Neighborhood Road this month. I have three new officers in the unit that aren't trained. By the end of the month, they will be trained. And then it'll be more flexibility to get a couple of guys out.
Train you as well.
Yes. Woodside, we were talking about quads at the meeting there. I believe they moved out.
No, 116 is where they had the quad.
Okay.
And only one, not, the thing before Sunday, they were riding around. They had at least ten kids in a trailer behind the quad. No helmets, no, Monroe Road.
And that's 116 now? Okay.
That's 116.
Okay. I know 108 was an issue one time. I know they're gone and we actually stopped him and talked to the younger one and made sure that he wouldn't be on, be doing that anymore. But now we have 116. So, we'll look into that.
And this is an adult that rides around with these kids in a trailer. That's doing anything.
Give it hay, Roger. But they don't have any hay.
Right.
There's one on Monroe too. Monroe Road.
Monroe. Okay. And specific times? The big thing is if we have times.
Usually weekends in the afternoon. And we're on the corner of 157 Monroe. And they keep blowing that stop sign. I'm talking fast. There were three patrol cars diagonal from us the other night with the situation with the drug dog. And while they were busy, somebody went through at like eight miles an hour. And of course, the officers were busy doing other stuff and couldn't. And Lance was just like, holy crap.
I mean, if we have the specific houses they're gonna return to, that helps because we really can't chase them.
They're constantly blowing the sign and it's hard for you guys to have a car there. But you're welcome to use our sorry parking lot.
I mean, if they're driving on our frequency, absolutely call 911 and, you know, and report the driver.
But there's a sorry parking lot around the house and like you guys could sit there. Then they wouldn't see you. But it's constant and I'm, we're just waiting here. A serious accident.
Right. And there was a fatal accident down in Windbrook with a motorcyclist month.
It was.
Longfellow.
Longfellow, Longfellow. Okay.
I saw one on the expressway yesterday. Oh my gosh.
Okay. I mean, the quads, if they drive illegally, absolutely 911. If you have any specifics, more specifics of times, like you said, the weekends, we'll look into it. And I can make that another check down there where the officers, you know, can look into it.
Same with us. It's usually weekends.
Weekends, okay.
In the later afternoon.
Okay. We get tied up a lot with different events, especially this time of year, but we'll make the checks. And, you know, once we impound, it's big money to get them out. So, usually that curtails it, you know, as well as the tickets that they're.
It's a shame we don't have someplace the kids can go to do something like that.
I know, yeah.
You know?
Question in the back?
Question. Oh, please.
Yeah, I live in the end of Pumpkinton Drive along the water, in the weathering area. Four different hours. Quads tearing up the weather. Constantly.
All right, well, we'll check into it. A lot of times, the problem is too, if you call 911, the patrol officer gets there and he has really no way to go in there either to check it. I mean, we have a couple of quads and we can go down and, you know, at specific times and do some enforcement. Again, we're not, we can't really chase them, but, you know, we can work it in. We have, we have three quads.
I got two if you need to. Anything on the speed carts?
Um, you know, it's, it's, you're next on the list for the speed cart. We have it, it's gonna be up on Ridge Road. And there's a list, a list that will be a couple of weeks up there and then we'll have it at Wavecrest, correct?
Yes.
Any specific cross street over there? I know there's.
I would probably technically pass Washington.
Right.
Where Washington and Wavecrest cut in like this.
Right.
Just before you make that sharp turn. It's a quick turn and then you got a stop sign right there.
Right. Okay. I know there was another issue about the post office. I didn't exactly get exactly what that was.
Uh, people not stopping for pedestrian. We got a sign now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
People blocking, you know, blocking, just to run into.
I almost got killed like I don't know how many times. No joke. I'm scared to go across there.
Right. I mean, that's another location.
It's easy to fish anywhere.
Yeah, mine.
He was there one day like half a park, like a block away. He couldn't even get back to this parking spot that he came to have another ticket. In fact, he gave another ticket. It was like.
Right. I mean, that's another spot we sometimes do checkpoints to around the corner. We'll get there, we'll shut down the road and we'll, we'll do checkpoints. I know we've done a few over on, right by Oakwood over here. When I was sergeant down here, that was the favorite spot. They'd come around the corner and, you know, we'd always have this one turn off the one-way street and attempt to, you know, but the only way to go is right.
Wavecrest is speed and stop signs on this one? Yes.
Yeah. We'll do some enforcement on the sign signs over there.
More speed. Not everyone's right. See, there's dogs. We used to have a thing where a pit bull got out and attacked a dog. The people were walking the dog. Doesn't seem to be anything you guys can do past saying, you know, don't do that. I mean, it's, it doesn't, it seems no.
There's no remedy.
No remedy to.
Right. I mean, does the village have an ordinance against, you got the unleashed dog ordinance? Right.
Well, what happens a lot of times is, P L gets down here, the dog's either locked up and down, so there's no dog to be found.
Right. Right. I mean, especially if it's a danger, absolutely call. There's kids around. A lot of times it's right around bus time. And like I said, a lot of times loose dog, the calls are prioritized. It's not gonna be up there.
No, they can't. They just.
Okay. Well, depending on what's going on.
They're there. They don't gain. They don't, it's just really, you know.
Right.
This seems to be, we're not members of the pit bull, you know, we're four pit bulls. And Mystic Beach unfortunately seems to be, you know, it's the Mystic Beach mascot. And these people who have these pit bulls do not know that they don't like other dogs, that they don't like cats. They're just like imbeciles. They don't keep them locked up. They don't lock them. It's just asinine.
But that's the case with this dog. The dog is a fine dog.
Exactly. It's a good, they're a good dog. You just have to know. And they can't run loose because they, anything that moves, they don't mean to hurt it.
All procedure is if we can go there and contain it, and then we pull the door warden down to come take the dog. A lot of times, the owner will show up and then if the door warden comes down, he's not gonna take the dog because the owner is there. So, basically, it would be a summons and that would be it.
Someone's unlicensed.
Well, if the dog doesn't have any.
Unlicensed itself.
Well, if nobody comes for the dog, you know, we could write in the tickets for that too. So, if the owner doesn't come, then, you know, the door warden can come take the dog.
It's a shame the dog has a self because the people.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
And pit bulls got bad rap.
Better care.
I stay with the pit bulls. I got one behind me. We have reinforced my fence. It's a chain link fence. We have reinforced it, reinforced it. And he goes somewhere else, comes under the fence. It's a female pit bull. I got, was outside my yard one day. If it wasn't for my girlfriend coming over, that pit bull was sneaking up behind me, showing its teeth. It's an ongoing thing for a whole year. I called the police, I called the town, I called the village, I called, they all come down. And the woman says, well, I can't contain her. I says, people have offered to fix her fence for her. And she refused to let them fix it. And meanwhile, I'm afraid to even walk out my yard, but I'm back door of my.
I mean, if the door is contained, we can, we can.
We can't contain it. It shows its teeth. And the minute you make a move, it starts lunch magic.
And then what does the door go back into the yard?
Then it goes back under my fence and back into the yard.
I mean, a lot of times for the, for us, the right to summons, we have to observe, you know, if we get there and the door is back in its yard.
Yeah. But they've gone over and asked the people to please. They've been time after time.
Have any officers gone over there and talked to them also?
Yes. They're tired of going over there. Especially poor Roman Reyes, when he drives 715.
Yep.
He's tired of going over there and talking to them.
It gets through the fence and then gets back over or?
It goes under my fence because I have an enclosure with cats in it. He wants to get to the cats. He's trying to dig.
Does he make it through to your yard?
Yes, he does make it through. Yes. He comes through over his, through his wooden fence, under, through the woods, under my chain link fence, which he dug a hole under. We reinforced it. He went in another spot. He dug a hole.
He did.
And come under and, like I said, the last time I was sitting outside, he came home right behind me. And I had a.
What added to?
I ran in the house as well. It's like.
What's your add?
Oh, I'm on 186 and the pit bull's on 61 Alder.
Don't run.
No, I know. I found that. He was like this close to me.
No, run. Walk.
There was another question too.
It's following the season now. What is it for things for like the dog fight? There's a lot of the dogs are starting to disappear. And having like missing ones that a lot of people are putting out now.
Well, if you have information, you know, relay our plain caller's offices will investigate that. If you have any information on the dog fight.
Two months ago, we had that.
The battlegrounds and my smittys and over there.
Yeah.
But it died down during the winter time. But now the season and kids are out, you know, like you're all through high school and all this stuff goes on within there in the high school.
Right.
But now all of a sudden, you see everybody posting on Facebook, the dogs are missing, the dogs are missing now, which means they're baiting. So, they were, you know, they.
Well, if you have any information, we'll definitely look into it. I mean, even a lot of these people who fight the dogs, the dogs are completely abused animals. If we investigate, you know, the owners will get arrested. We'll take the dogs and we've done it before.
I see kids that wanna be parted and think, oh, I got this. They, many times that they just found like a dog or got a dog and it's still a puppy, they can't take it home. And they'll tie it up somewhere in the woods and stuff like, you know, things like that. But now it's the season again and they usually meet up over by the high school area. Like they would have their fights and stuff like that, you know.
Okay. Any specific information? We'll look into it.
We just threw, you know, our kids being in the school.
Right.
Because Smittys was closed down and kids collect by battlegrounds with the future store. Things go up in and around and breaking.
On a good note, I saw on the news on the weekend, Joey just had his first birthday.
Who?
Little dog that was thrown out of the.
Oh, okay.
Walk in, he crying.
Little Joey.
Little Joey.
Okay. I mean, if you want to, our number at the office, the cop office is 852-8775. Most of the time we're out, we're not in the office, but there's an answering machine. Leave your information, we'll get back to you.
I mean, I just don't.
I mean, if you, if you call up with specific information, this is happening this time, and you have information, we can look into it. General stuff, it's harder for us to, you know, even the drug complaints, you know, specifics, you know, types of cars, you know, license plates, times a day, you know, we look into all that stuff. You know, I'll make it a patrol checks and then all the officers that work in a certain area, they have to document the checks. You know, like down here at Deli, I know this 715, he makes checks. We made checks every night that we're working, that we're out, that we're down here, you know.
That's it. So, I got all the questions. Thank you again. And thank Inspector Newell for keeping us in his thoughts here. Guys are doing a great job. We appreciate it. We were supposed to have a guest speaker here. Some very special mic.
No, I have one for me now.
That's what V S said.
I'm gonna do a couple of resolutions, accepting the minutes for 417, 2013 work session. So, move.
All in favor? Aye.
I need, I would ask.
Sorry.
Resolution, accepting the minutes of 4:30, 2013, special budget session. So, move.
All in favor? Aye. Pose.
I would excuse that.
Resolution, authorizing the payment of present bills as per abstract 12-2012 in the amount of 274,745,085. On a question, should that be abstract 12, 2013?
No. Back to the next, the next one.
Gotcha. Sorry. So, move.
Ava? Pose.
A resolution accepting sequo, determination from Suffolk County Planning as Village of Mystic Beach as lead agency for the Dunkin' Donuts project. So, move.
On motion, let me just explain what that means. That Suffolk County Planning, we have to notify part of secret process. This is for, this is for the planning board application for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts project. But the actual identity of the company is irrelevant. It's for the three unit commercial building that's posed for the corner of, was it Mastick School, Suffolk County School?
Mastick Road, Mystic Beach.
Right. At that corner, you have to notify government agencies if they have any objections to the village board serving as lead agency that controls the environmental assessment for secret purposes. Suffolk County Planning Commission recommended that the village service be a lead agency. So, that's all. Just accepting village service lead agency.
All in favor?
I'll give a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also recommend that at that same time, at the board, to restart the planning process again. We'll get in touch with the expediter for the applicant and that they set June 11th, 6 p.m. as the planning board.
At 7 o'clock?
Uh, 6. We have a board meeting at 7, so I had to put it at 7.
All in favor?
Aye. Well, I need to make the motion for 7 to June 11th.
I'll make the motion for June 11th at 6 p.m. A meeting night?
That's our regular board.
Okay, so we'll meet here at 6.
6?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Resul. Carrie. Resolution, adopting the final scoping report.
What this is, this is the, it's called file, but it's false from file in our complicated adoption of the zoning code for the village of Mystic Beach. This is the final, this is the final scoping report that allows what the next steps are gonna be in drafting the ultimate environmental impact statement. The board had already had a public meeting a few weeks ago that was noticed and well attended with some good questions on the draft scoping report. This is the final scoping report. This tells us what's going to be in the next environmental impact statement. And it outlines a battery of categories that's going to be analyzed and included in environmental impact statements because as this board knows, there's going to potentially be an environmental impact as you rezone your village. So, it talks about the areas that are gonna be included in draft environmental impact. This is recommended by our secret consultants. It goes to the background, natural environmental resources. It's gonna, we'll ultimately discuss surface, topography, groundwater, surface water, vegetation, wildlife, human environmental resources, land use, zoning, community character, demographics, traffic, cultural resources, cumulative impacts, alternatives, and then future actions. These are all gonna be subject to an ultimate environment. These are the scopes that the village would like to have included. It'll be included in a ultimate environmental impact statement that alone will also be subject to at least one public hearing, if not two. So, this is just again, zeroing in on where we need to go for the approval. Which is the motion, adopting the resolution, adopting the final draft, final scope for the draft environmental impact statement.
I'll make that motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Okay. The discussion on the boat, on boat parking laws?
The board will recall that this was subject to a public hearing at the last board meeting. Oh, there were two board meetings ago where it was held open. There was no, the board reserved decision on it. The proposal, there's a lot of questions about unregistered motor vehicles. We went through that unregistered boat, what boats needed to be registered, what didn't. Again, just to refresh the public's recollection, this is about currently parking on front or side lawns is prohibited for motor vehicles. What this proposal is that this will allow, which will prohibit parking of unregistered motor vehicles on front and side lawns, continue the prohibition. And boat, vessel or motor boats is defined in chapter 520-6 for boat trailers. It's proposed on the front or side lawn of any property. Deputy Mayor Stewart's had pointed out that side lawns, oftentimes boats being the boating and marina maritime community. We have boats and trailers that get parked on side lawns. So, the proposal was just to limit, to still prohibit motor vehicles from being parked on front and side lawns. They have to be parked on driveways. They can't be parked on lawns. And prohibit boats, vessels, motor boats, or boat trailers on front lawns, but to permit them to be parked on side lawns. And again, this is unregistered. So, anybody who has a registered boat is permissible. This is, or trailer. This is just trying to stop unregistered boats, junk kind of situations.
We, you just need a resolution to that?
Yes. You want to open a public hearing, you can. We closed it last time.
We'll take a few questions.
Okay.
Come outside the car, state your name.
I need a wetzel.
How would you not get some registered?
There'll be a sticker on it.
Are you guys will be able to see?
Got binoculars.
Because sometime, yeah. That's good. So, should I still find sign to sign, the card?
Yeah, just for the record.
Okay. No, that's what I was curious because sometimes they do a nice job hiding it with other cars in front of it. Also cars, they'll park a car really in back of an unregistered car just to hide the license plate.
We have ways of telling.
Good. Thank you. That's all.
No other questions? We'll close the public portion and I'll make the motion to accept that resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Okay. This probably not gonna be much of a discussion, but we have the work session on the third Wednesday of the month. We'd like to change it to the first Wednesday of the month because we like to have the work session before we have the meeting the following week. The way it is right now, we have the meeting and then the following week, we have the work session. It should be the other way. So, I'd like to make a motion. We make that change and make it effective the next month too.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
We gotta cancel tomorrow's work session. Yeah, you want to. Oh, yeah. Tomorrow's work session will be canceled. Right. Resolution. I'll make that motion to cancel tomorrow's work session.
Ava? Pose.
What was that? We're just gonna set the, set the resolution for, set the public hearing for June 11th for the contractor registration, the proposed contractor registration law. Okay. It's a, it's a proposed resolution that was proposed by the village administrator. If the board will recall, the public will recall in the, two meetings ago, there was a proposal to license contractors. The proposal is actually evolved now on review to register contractors. So, we just registered in village hall. So, we have their information. That will protect the members of the public for having contractors who are registered instead of fly-by-night or unlicensed people who we've seen. So, the village is not actually issuing a license. That's the purview of the county. We're just registering the contractors in the village hall. This is just, again, this is just by resolution, just to set the public hearing for June 11th.
Anybody wanna make that?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Trustee request? What do you, anything? Trustee request?
Yep.
The monthly code enforcement report. The number of complaints received were 246. Number of appearance tickets issued were 26. Number of unfounded complaints was 43. And the number of closed by compliance was 37. And the number of warnings issued were 48. Any questions? Thank you. Next, Deputy Mayor Trustee Gary starts. Your report.
On the highway, I think everybody's aware the signs have been going up on a lot of corners. On Neighborhood Road, they're still finishing up a lot of the roads on the overlaps where they're being reheated, smoothed and sealed out, making a tight joint with crossroads. The sealing is still going on on the roadways. They're just about done. Are they done with the sealing?
We're done tomorrow.
Okay. So, that's, there's two different types of sealing. One is the reheating, re-raking, adding new material and making a permanent seal of the joints of the roads. And the other is just spraying sealant into the cracks in the roads, which protects the roads tremendously. We've got a number of catch basins that have all been identified and would be, we're setting them up for installation. We held demonstrations on street sweepers. It was quite an exciting event. It was a contest between companies. We invited them into the village. We took a road, spread a whole pile of dirt up and down the whole road and told them to go at it and to find out who had the best street sweepers. We identified which one we felt was the best and who won that day. Just to let everybody know, it was between an American sweeper and a European sweeper. The American sweeper won. The European sweeper lost. So, the village is gonna be buying American. We have, we have set up the RFPs, right?
Bits are out.
Bits are out. I believe they're supposed to be back May 18th.
Right.
That's both for the sweeper and for the infrared setup. So, we'll find out who wins the bids. That's about it. Thank you.
Trustee, yeah, Capia.
Okay. Um, yeah, we'll do that. Just a review of the last month. There were 36 building permits issued, 68 rental permits. Now, I get a lot of complaints though. We've got a lot more rentals in the village. But these are rental permits that people were already renting. They just had never gotten permits. So, now that they've gotten their permits, houses are being inspected and the rentals are in compliance. So, I just don't want you to think that we're bringing all these new rentals in. They've always been here. But now they're, they're meeting all the codes. There were 23 searches, one C O, certificate of occupancy, seven certificates of compliance, 33 property searches, seven 143 Bs, which stops the rental payment, payment rather, because the house is not up to compliance, three CEUs, which is a certificate of existing use, and six houses were boarded up because they were unfit for occupancy. In addition, if anyone here was in the flood zone, had damage to their home, we have a lot of information for you. If you weren't able to come to our two sessions, it's very important that you pick up the documentation on the table over there. You can register online. You can go to the Herkimer office, the vet center on Herkimer, register there. You can dial, also dial 211. Sign up for everything. You don't know what you'll be denied. You don't know what you'll get. Sign up for everything. Don't automatically assume that you don't qualify. So, dial 211. They'll walk you through the process. You will get a caseworker and hopefully there'll be some assistance. In addition, we have the Robinhood Foundation that is, well, this is national grid, but it looks like this one. It's up, it should be up there. Fill it out. This is money that was granted to the village so that we can help residents replace some of the things they've lost that were encoded by insurance and FEMA didn't code. So, feel free to pick up the form, fill it out, send it into the village, and let's see if we can help you get your house back to normal. In addition, we have the National Grid survey. We are trying to get natural gas into Mystic Beach, but we need people to sign up. You're not obligated to sign in and get natural gas into your home, but they wanna see what interest there is down here. There'll be mailer going out. There are flyers over there you can fill out. And it's also on the website. So, please fill it out, send it back in so we can get an idea of how many people are interested and hopefully get natural gas into the village.
If you do it on a website, you come back to the.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, yeah.
How do you check that?
It is.
If it's up, we're ready to go.
Okay, if you do it on the website, fill it out, you could actually send it right back to, to village hall through the website, so you don't have to worry about putting a stamp on it.
Can you, you don't want to set me for second at the work session, because the 18th bids come back in 20 seconds, you don't want to take a shot at trying to work. You may want to have a work session, schedule a work session for me in 20 seconds.
We have that work session on the 18th?
The bids come in?
Yeah.
On the, oh, 17th, 18th.
They can't do that day yet.
You have a work session at 3 o'clock? Village Hall, so we can get it going, and I'd like to get the sweep here, like before when they used.
You have to have an outside, you have to have an outside resolution.
Okay, I'd like to make a resolution to have a quick work session on Friday, the 17th, at 3:00 p.m.?
At nutrition.
At the nutrition, uh, we'll do it at village hall, because nutrition center's still being occupied until this 12:00. We'll do it at the village hall. All right, just a couple of things I got, apparently people get the...
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, second. Volta Vega, opposed?
I get a lot of phone calls all day, night, weekends and why not, people get very panicky when they see a newsletter that comes out from unknown sources, and everything that's pretty much in this newsletter is probably 99% false. Simple fact is, the Bablin supervisor, Rich Schaefer, is not giving out the $3 million that was given to Mystic Beach. $3 million comes to Mystic Beach, and we take care of our own. Parking meters are not going to be installed on Neighborhood Road as long as I'm there.
What? Where was that?
The, one of the other thing is, you know, in part of the letter that goes out, certain individuals may not like the wish list that was presented to the state. Me personally, I would like to see a three to four foot seawall, all protecting Mystic Beach. I know there's some people that don't like it, but three to four feet of a seawall will build, and it's not a seawall where you're going to see it, it's going to elevate the ground on pretty much the, it would be the south side of Riviera Road, so when you get the two to three foot flooding in the bay, it's not going to, it's not going to hit the roads, and it's not going to, you know, do damage to people's houses again. Not going to ruin the environment by putting a seawall in there, it's going to be all approved if we get it now. This is just one of our wish lists that we were trying to look for. The other thing, an update on the outer beach, I was on the outer beach last week, coming back very slow. The biggest concern that we have, if we do get a norristo, or if we do get another hurricane, because hurricane season starts June 1, we're going to lose whatever couple of feet that sand that was brought back. On a good note, the county is sending out some RFPs for dredging machines, the earliest that they're going to come up with as of recently is still the middle, end of August. That would be earliest, providing we can get dredging machines here. The sand is right out there in the ocean, and they're expected to fif, to put maybe 15 to 16 feet of sand back on the Barry Beach from Smith Point all the way to Richardson Line. So, I got my fingers crossed on that, I keep breaking the, you know, the chops on that, so hopefully that, I don't want to see it all just come that quick, but hopefully the weather will cooperate, at least it'll next year. Just to remind everybody, Neighborhood Road from Comac Road all the way down Neighborhood Road to Whittier to Mystic Beach Road on the 27th, it'll be Memorial Day Parade starting at 12 o'clock, so if there's anybody that's pretty much traveled out, you might be rerouted other ways to get around. And the only other thing that I got, it's actually on a good note, I think it is anyway, the district attorney's office paid us a visit this week, just like he did to any other town, village, or county, throughout Nassau Suffolk County, just to basically see if we're doing things right. Cooperating with them, we gave them all our paperwork, and Brian, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I, I had a conversation with the assigned assistant district attorney, she was receptive, and I don't want to say impressed, but glad that we had all the documents set, the mayor announced the proper declaration of emergency, the following five local emergency orders that the village passed under the mayor's signature was in order. She recalled those, that was the evacuations, the different curfews that we were all under during the hurricane, so they were in order, and that was requested, and we anticipate giving the balance of documents on Friday.
Okay, we'll take some questions. If you could just call up the...
I need a wetzel, again, 65 Magnolia Drive, Mystic Beach. I, I've been riding our bikes for exercise, right? And then I, I see a lot of improvement, by the way, thank you, really, because it was a lot worse way back when. But, you know what, I still see, I still see Hurricane Sandy's debris on the front, on side perfect places. And I went into the office yesterday, or the day before yesterday, can't remember anymore because I keep forgetting about homeless and stuff, but I went in there, and I, there was a young lady with white hair, she was sitting all the way in the desk, and then I said to her, I said, are they going to do anything about the last pickup for Hurricane Sandy, or, or spring cleanup? Well, I didn't, I don't think I mentioned spring cleanup, because we haven't had that for 15, 20 years, we still have that in the spring and fall, but, and she says, oh, no, no. I said, well, what happens to the, the big gigantic root that the person finally was able to get machinery after so many months, because he couldn't get access to it? Or he cleared off his wood, you know, the, the tree, and finally he was able to work around to dig this big tube roots, and, and the other people who had all this debris that were able to actually have help come in and put on the stuff, whatever, I said, oh, they got to take care of that at their own expense. And I was a little bit taken aback, because she didn't say anything about, well, if you really have a, a problem, please write, here's a piece, there's a little notepad there, please write it out. Now, if you saw how many people visited village that day, you could see that mine was a comment that was about this long, because they didn't do a piece of paper, and I was a little bit taken aback by this, the friendliness that this person displayed, and the understanding of where I was coming from. I'm not a person that's used to really being nasty and talking nasty, that's not my education part of it. My education part of it is to present it in a nice, fashionable way, and I was just hoping that maybe, I don't know how long it will do, I know it's going to cost us money, how is that going to help some of those people who have, you know, the stuff still in their side yard, or whatever it is, themselves, please, if you don't mind, that dressing room.
Can we discuss the today, actually, because aside from what's down, there's a lot of dead trees, bushes, large, very large trees, and they don't look like they're coming back. So, since the storm, we didn't know if these were going to survive. They're not going to survive, that means they're going to come down at some point.
Right.
So we did talk about it, but we have to figure out how we pay for that.
Right.
And, and the homeowner would have to bring it to the street, you can't go on their property.
Right, right, right. Because I know we have a tree, and it's, we have, we're very fortunate, we have another entity, a property, a lot, and if that tree falls, it's not going to hurt anybody, but the fact is, my husband's been taking care of the rest of the wood, we have a wood burning store, so he's been trying to take, he's only one guy. My feet have been better now, after I went to the doctor, he put some lidocaine on him, that's fine, but I can't help him anymore as well as I used to. So he can't get to that one tree that's there, but that's not the only, that's not even in the street or the road. We make sure that he did it by hand, by, with our truck to pull that root, and you guys were so great about coming in there and taking our spruce that fell after 65, 75 years, that it fell. So that was great, because we were, he just worked on it with a little pick and shovel and got it out, but not everybody is as, could have done it as well as what he's so consciously to do. So I'm hoping that you did find a way for that.
We're looking into it.
I hope so.
Because it affects a lot of people, but we have to be very cautious of what we offer.
You mentioned the seawall, right? It's, how, how, how much above the road would the seawall be, if I may ask?
It's not going to be above the road, you take Riviera Drive, we may just add some fill on it, to, to make it even where it goes across into the water, because if you go down Riviera Drive, most of the roads are on an angle, so we're trying to build it up at least a couple of feet on it. The residents along the waterfront don't get flooded out of it.
That's because when you said seawall, I mean, it's...
By terminology, I call it a seawall, anything to keep the sea out of going in either. It could be a bird.
Immediately saw Lake O'Pechovee, you know, with the big gigantic, you know, seawall around the lake, and all that kind of stuff. And what they did do, but I mean, that's for the future, really, because they did make that into a bike walking path, you know, they elevated it, and then I was wondering, if you had the seawall, what happens to the docks, but thank you for verifying it, that was very good. Anything else that I forgot to wrap? I have one house that's been abandoned, they came last year, maybe two years, I'm going to say two years, because I'm working half time. It's on Elm Road.
Any address?
It's, there's no address, there's a, it's, has been boarded up.
Elm and what?
Elm and between Daisy and Magnolia, on the south side of the road, and about a year and a half or so, when the village was starting, that was when, it was a big thing, town people were there, you know, Olga Shav would do, homeless of everybody, including us, because we saw the commotion, what's going on, we wanted to be on TV now, just for, so we went to find out, and they were doing something about the house. So what happens after, like, three weeks later, four weeks later, two people are there, and they're trying to clean up the place, and they got rid of the, all the weeds that were around the whole house and everything, and then they started fixing. And then, because everybody said, that's okay, nobody said anything else, it stopped. And for the past year or so, it has stopped. So if you don't mind, please, I would like to know.
Do you mean, you check the number?
I know exactly what house she's talking about, it's 51 Daisy.
Okay.
Is it 51 Daisy? Because it's...
It's on Elm, but it's considered 51 Daisy.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay, and of course, it's a dirt road, you know, it's a dirt road. So now, somebody said something, oh, belongs to you. Oh, somebody says it belongs, I don't know what.
We don't care who it belongs to, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Okay?
And you guys get a big hug from us, okay?
Thank you.
Don't worry about everybody else, we'll take care of it. Don't you don't need it.
Probably, probably don't need it, but I see the road signs going up on the community and I applaud it. However, the ones that went up recently are not capital letters, just the first letters capital, and they're harder to read. The ones that were all capital letters were much, much better, and if you want to order any more, I suggest you order them with all capital letters, because they're much easier to read. Anyway, thanks for all you're doing in the village, you're doing a good job, and I applaud.
Thank you.
I just, he's just making...
I'm sorry.
He's up there.
You have people, people are doing...
No, he's always up there.
Hold on, hold on, I'm going to call in somebody's head.
You need a pen, Joe, somebody's going to call the hallways for me.
Okay.
Pat, you're up.
Sorry, sorry, depending on cut through again. I, I don't need a microphone, and I, there's been so much damage from this storm, and people are still hurting from this storm. I lost my home, and there are a lot of people here who are still trying to get their lives back together. I, I mean, I would just, Lance doesn't like me to come to these meetings, because sometimes I say things, and I don't really think about them before I do, but I'm going to try really hard.
It's not like I'm not in the way.
Why don't we use whatever funds we have coming in right now to clean up the debris, to get back on our feet, to clean up after this hurricane, and then move forward? Everybody's life who wasn't impacted by this hurricane is business as usual, but there are hundreds of people, maybe more, that have been severely hit by this. It's not over, they have to live it every day. I do. My boyfriend worked for National Grid, everybody's sitting there pissed at him all, and it wasn't National Grid, it was LIPA, and PSEG is going to take over, and National Grid is all for it. For two months, he worked the storm. I mean, I'd just like to see more trying to get that stuff taken care of before we move forward, I mean, doesn't that make sense as a community?
Hey, I explained to you before, and I'll be honest with you, and I don't care what the politicians are telling you, we did not receive one dime.
No, this had nothing? Oh, sorry.
We have, we really don't have no money, we're working off the residents' tax dollars here.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for money, and there are so many avenues for people to take, there are family counseling services, there's Catholic charities, there's the New York people, you have to dig. Nobody's given us this information, you have to freaking dig. I got like a pile over there, the woman who was supposed to come with me is from, where does the name, I'm so upset, I can't even think, who's that?
It's the New York Horizon.
Right, she was supposed to come with me today, but, and so was Newsday and Channel 12, and I'm kind of glad they didn't, because when we got...
Newsday's, yeah?
Oh, thanks, Stacy, sorry, where are you?
No, it's...
You're the one who raises, yeah?
Oh, whatever, anyway, Stacy was supposed to bring Channel 12, or whatever, and she was supposed to come, but she's not allowed to talk to the press, so, and she, I guess when she talked to her supervisor, she couldn't come. But there are so many, there's a food pantry of the Hebrew Center, regardless if you have money for food or not, they're there, and they're giving out boxes of food to help you supplement, so you can get food and stuff like that in the house. And I'm not asking for money from the mayor or anybody else, but there's, we need to, like, just help one another get through this, you know, and if we all talk to one another and got together, maybe like a work session, we could all share our information, and maybe our lives could go back together, along with everybody else's, and we could all move forward. And I think everybody here is for that. I hope so. And, thank you. I don't know what money is, I don't know where the money is, but I'm going to find it, I'm going to find it.
Just, just to let you know too, I met this afternoon with the United Way, and actually they do things a little bit different, they request you to fill out this assistance form, which has been floating around village hall for probably about two months now, they set you up with a...
They set you up with a counselor.
Yeah, they set you up with a counselor, very simple information to put on there, basically if you're making less than 90,000, and you've got 51% damage on your house, they have a lot of money that they can throw towards the resident's house. In meeting with them today, they could actually throw almost $20,000 in renovating the houses, and one of them that they came out with is free insulation, free air sealing, free home and health safety checks, all by signing up, they'll come in a house, if your house is ready to be sheetrock, they'll send people down there, they will pay for it. The United Way gets a lot of money from businesses, and they, they got this money, they want to spend it, all they need is the people to come down, it's all to pay for it. If anybody's around on Wednesday morning, we have a representative from the organization that sits at village hall, she gets kind of lonely, because there's not really too many people that are coming down, and, but I know most of the people that are, you know, damaged during the storm are probably home, trying to figure out what their next move is, but if you could just spend about a half hour of your time and talk to her, if you know somebody, just turn them on to this organization, there is a lot of help out there, right now they're the ones that have the money, and they're the ones that'll come in here and do some work. Also, anybody in the room, or anybody in the room that knows somebody, I was given $1,500 in gift cards today, $100 gift cards from King Cullen. So if people are really hurting, and they can't put their house back together, and you're worried about feeding your families, come see the village, and, you know, maybe we can take that money, where you can put it back into your house, and we'll put some food on your table for at least a week or two. And again, if it happens once, twice, three times, the United Way guaranteed me that they will keep coming back until they spend every money, and they committed to Mystic Beach. And, and the other thing with the National Grid, if you did fill out the application, I'm going to meet with them in June, and I'd like to have at least a few thousand of these things, so you can start thinking about getting things and everybody into the year. Other than that?
Next to this, Joe?
I just want to second what Dick was saying about the street signs. I mean, we live here, so we pretty much know where the streets are, but I have noticed that just glancing at them, I have to do more than just glance at them to understand what the name of the street is. Could be a potential road hazard, just throwing it out there. It probably should have been a little higher, so you could spread the characters out a little bit better, but what's done is done, I just thought I'd mention that. And the other thing is, the old... done, it's done. I just thought I'd mention that. And the other thing is, the old street signs. I know it's kinda late to bring this up, don't know where they are, don't know what happened to them. But I was thinking maybe to generate some revenue, either for a charity or for the town itself, there might be people like myself who might want to bid on some of these signs as kinda like art, you know, with my back shed, the name of the street got a little hard, just to kinda have it. So, I don't know if they're still around. Maybe it's something you might wanna do.
Well, I can tell you, being retired from the side of the farm in the town of Brookhaven, the junkies get them signs, and they cash them in their car showers or...
I just noticed they seem to disappear more quickly recently than in past years in coming of those, the new signs. So, I'm wondering if they've taken down or something else.
No, most of the signs are gonna be replaced in areas where signs were stolen. We're not taking any signs down. They disappear, and we're replacing them.
Oh, so it's gotta disappear. So, no, and the reason why...
Just don't let the village fancy hanging of that guy.
You took it inside.
The reason why I was asking is if they are kind of automatically being swapped out for newer signs, and if these were gonna be made available, like myself, I'd be interested in one, or maybe more people would be. So, maybe auction, or something along those lines, make them available.
We can definitely keep that in mind.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Can I just not use this, because I don't know how to work it, okay?
Only if we can hit you.
What?
Only if we can hit you.
Okay, I'll yell. First, I wanna thank you for...
Boya.
My name is Jennifer Griffin, and I live at 224 Dogwood. And I wanna thank you for working on the seawall. That would make a tremendous difference for us, tremendous. And I realize we're by ourselves over where we are. I don't expect personal favors, but it would make a big difference. And I wanted to ask you, what is the village wish list? And where can I see it? You made reference to a village wish list?
I think I have a copy here. If not, I'll get you one.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, if you got a copy of the village prior, you can just send out all that.
I don't really like take it seriously. More?
Hey, guys. I'm not gonna start with the road, although I'll take an update if you want. I wanna talk about, first of all, whoever's doing the website, you're missing meeting minutes in July 2012, and then you're missing all of November and all of December in 2012. So, those should be added in, if you don't mind. In going back and reading some meeting minutes, I found out this interesting piece of news about Cablevision giving the village startup of an additional grant of ten thousand dollars for taping board meetings. The village has the right to go to the town and put it on Channel 18. Again, it says it twice in the minutes, because it was such a good news. Cablevision is giving ten thousand dollars startup to get that off the ground. Cablevision also agrees to give assistance to borrowing equipment, providing training for the use of that equipment, et cetera. This is from two years and two months ago. And I wanna know when that's gonna start. I'd like to know where that ten thousand dollars is. I spoke to them at Cablevision, they said it indeed was in the Cablevision contract, and I wanna know why we have to do it, and you're not doing it.
No, what happened was, we met with Brookhaven Cable, and the problem is, we have to send people down to do a couple of days of training with the cameras. They don't give them to us. They let us use them. And we were gonna do it, and then the hurricane hit, and we just haven't done it. But all right, give me another...
I've also never seen...
Give me another one, then I'll work on it.
And just so we don't get inflated and deflated when we get disappointed, I hope it's true. I've just never seen that happen, where Cablevision will just actually give a grant for municipality unless that municipality is a franchisor. We're not a franchisor because we're sold to the town of Brookhaven's franchise. The village of Padgett, for instance, is a franchisor. The village of Belleport, when you have a franchise agreement with them, they'll generally put that in. I think it's called Peng Fund. But in...
We don't have it.
We're a franchisor.
Yes.
Then it would be in our franchise.
And it's in there, and it's in there from over like two years ago. So, I'd like to see that money used for what the purpose of it was.
They say ten thousand dollars. They haven't given us the ten thousand dollars.
And the town is refusing us access to Channel 18.
Correct.
Well, you don't have to use Channel 18, actually. You could, since we're already giving, what, Jo, at Tri-Hamlet News, two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a month, right? She's got a website. And there's no reason that we couldn't be videotaping and putting it right up. You're already paying her, put it right up on her website. I mean, people can't be here...
I don't know if you could run two hours of meeting on the website.
I can see. Why not?
Sure.
You sure can. No reason not to. So, I mean, I really, I don't understand why this to me was, if you go to the minutes, it's not just with the Cablevision. It's over and over again that, you know, we're supposed to be doing better than the town. And I gotta say, the town does a way better job of publicizing their public meetings, and I'd like to see us step up and get it to the same level, so that people can go and see these meetings, see what's going on. It's, you know...
By the way, yours is supposed to be televised, too, right?
I'm getting there. But I have to...
I haven't seen one of them yet.
I haven't started. It's coming out very soon, thank you very much. But you got ten thousand dollars to do it, I gotta do it on my own. And this is exactly my point here. This should be done by you guys. I shouldn't have to do it. And I'm doing it as a public service. So, you know, I would like to see you guys do it, and I'll just write the commentary. And you can read it on the monthly meeting.
Okay. Hearing nothing else?
What? Riviera Drive. How are we doing on it?
We're waiting for response from DC.
Great. Okay, that's been a year.
Yeah, maybe you could go home and speed it up for us. We're working real close with them, so...
Dan, I don't see what the problem is, if you're working so close with them.
We submitted the final approval, waiting for their response.
Sir, if you can speak, you don't have to go to the podium. Just...
Where should I go?
Wherever you are.
Right there, that's good. Yeah, I was here a couple of months ago, and I...
State your name, loser.
I'm sorry. Paul Fallin, 275 McKimley Drive. I was here a couple of months ago. I'm having a continuing problem with my name. Last year, I called the cops, I called the cops, I called the cops, I called the cops. Nothing gets done. They come by, they come, shut it down. They need me to turn it up. They come by, I shut it down. They need me to turn it up.
We just ordered a test for me. Did you put it in here?
Well, the house he's talking about was in court last month with the Pope that gave him all the seven tickets.
Okay. But are you still getting the noise from last month?
Still getting the noise.
Obviously, court doesn't really...
Also, too, this guy is burning fires out high, out back with flames twenty feet high.
I mean, Dan, you definitely have a good gripe on. I mean, the only thing that you really could do is dial 911, is for a fire chief to come down here. A fire chief's authorized to call Suffolk County Police Department and issue services.
I believe, I called the village, don't they? And I believe security told me that they'd done a call, and that they'd done a shut it down.
We can go down here and tell them, but if we have a problem, then we're gonna call 911, too. You definitely want 911 there.
Right.
Backing, whether it's us or the fire.
Security guys come up and say, "I'll call 911 and do that," because they might listen to that number. Nobody's listening.
I give you one better. I'll give you my phone number. Next time it happens, call me. I'll take it.
Fair enough.
Okay?
That's good. Thank you.
Now, I spoke to a code enforcement on Sunday. They said you still haven't gotten the meters.
Can you go up on a podium, man?
When I spoke to a code enforcement on Sunday, they told me that they wanted the meters, but we still haven't received them yet.
Correct.
And also, now, this has been four years of complaining to the Seventh Precinct. What I called the Seventh Precinct on Sunday, because they're never doing anything, they said, well, they can't do anything anyway, because they don't have the equipment. So, nothing would stand up in court. But it's been, we've been spinning our wheels for over four years with this same nuisance, and it's, it'll start when they get home from the bar. And that means that people in my home have to get up to go to work with no sleep. We have a brand-new baby in the house, so sometimes there's no sleep because of the baby, which that's, that's nothing. But it's four years of this going on. And also, when we began the last meeting, but nobody did get back to us, they were supposed to look into, because I believe the house is in foreclosure. They were supposed to research for me if there's even a permit for renting. The person that owned the house moved in 2006, a year after her husband hung himself in the garage of the house, and then started renting to her brother. So, she, as far as I know from rumors, she's letting the house go to foreclosure. And I know it's taken longer for houses to go to foreclosure. But I don't believe there's a permit for renting. And again, we've made so many phone calls, and nothing ever seems to get done.
We can have seven, like, days of threatening.
Okay. And they did haul someone out of the house last week in handcuffs, for a warrant, but I don't know what the warrant is for, because every other month, there's new people living in this house. It's the changing of the trash every other month. And it really is get to the point of, we would rather the house be foreclosed, boarded. I will mow the lawn. But at least we, at least, it's not just me, it's my other neighbor, that we don't get any peace of tranquility. The person that lives in the house is also known by the police department to be assaultive. He's already gone to jail. We watched him beat women in the backyard. We called the Seventh Precinct, they come, they don't get any arrests, and then they'll tell you, well, they don't, they don't wanna press charges. And as far as I know, a retired police officer will always change. You've got a domestic violence situation, and there is someone that you can tell was physically abused. It doesn't matter if she continues on, or he continues on, that the DA will press charges without them. And it's like, you know, Seventh Precinct, I think they need to go back to domestic violence 101, because I'm gonna be so infuriated if I find out that a woman gets murdered next door to me. And I'm to the point of frustration.
Maybe if you can, just give me your name and phone number. I will look into tomorrow.
Well, we... That's not long.
Okay. Give me, give me a call tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. You know the address, then?
275.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah?
Sorry. I heard the young lady say something about Riviera, which seems to be pretty common knowledge. I hear a lot of things. So, what is that? What are you talking about? Riviera?
Riviera Drive is pretty much the road that covers the whole Mestic Beach on the waterfront. Pretty much, it's a dirt road.
Okay.
Trucks, cars, everything goes over it, becomes hilly, lots of potholes. We put some material down on here, and I guess the material...
Oh, all right. That's what that is?
Yes.
That's cool. And the reason why I ask is because also on the other side, I guess, by the marina on the west side, there's a Riviera as well.
Yes.
Whereas like, there is no road. I went on a tour of the neighborhood, and, I mean, that looks pretty good, too. Is anything getting done with that?
The only thing that's getting done with that is actually three residents down there. And they're pretty much happy with the road. There's really nobody else that needs to go down here. If you went on the backside closer to water, it becomes a problem, because you have four-wheel-drive guys going up and down it, possibly looking into closing that part of the road off. Just have that one area that's in there.
So, I just, foils, they're not coming back in the amount of time they're supposed to come back. I know you're new, so I had to interview you. I'll do a little work to catch up on it, but I at least, I didn't get my ten days notice or anything. I'll just have to patch.
I didn't want to turn that out.
Okay, all right. So, I just wanted to say, let's...
We're working on it.
A little bit. And part of the problem is, there's really no information on the website, so the only way to get information is to foil. And that's also why we're not...
Well, just call me like you usually do. That's why we're not up yet, because we're still waiting for information. Thank you. Name and address?
Oh, I don't need that. Michelle Wilkinson, 191 Washington Drive. Okay, I come to a lot of the meetings, and I always try to conduct myself in a nice way, and try to be like, no matter if I agree or disagree, I don't get up and yell and heckle people. But I notice there's a lot of that here, and nobody ever like says, "Hey, guys, cut it out." I see if like someone doesn't agree, everybody laughs. It's really rude. And I wish that we could conduct ourselves like we were neighbors, and we were residents together, and not like we're all just like against each other. And it'd be embarrassing if somebody else was here from somewhere else, and someone said something that somebody didn't agree with, and everybody just yelled at them, started laughing at them. I think it's really rude, and I think we need to change that in the meetings. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Okay. Yeah, we'd like to break for executive station for some legal litigation. Okay. I make the motion?
Head first.
Head first.